I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Mayor Filkins?
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for the first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name, and then if you would write your name and address for the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, my name is Jay Richley. I am coming here wearing the hat of the American Legion tonight, which I've worn to this council a few times. I'm here to inform you that come next year, 2019, our Cadillac American Legion Post 94 will be celebrating 100 years. And also, I want to add a little something to this because this makes this post rather unique. We are one of very, very few worldwide that have been in business for 100 continuous years. The American Legion was formed on the battlefields of France at the end of World War I, and after the war was over, the troops came home, opened Post 94, named it Ray E. Bostic, who was the first casualty from Cadillac for that war. And it's been in business ever since. So we have a committee that's formed. I have been working with the city council here, or the city clerk, quite a bit, so we have quite a bit of stuff done, a lot of the paperwork filled off for what we really need. But I'm here to inform you guys that this is coming at us, and we're going to try and make it a pretty big celebration. It's just going to be a one-day thing, open to the public. We intend to have a festivity at the city park, the pavilion, lunch afterwards at the Legion with an open house, and then the party begins afterwards. So I will be back periodically to keep you guys informed if there's anything I need so far. Everything has been falling right into place, but we will meet again. So, thank you very much.
What's the anniversary date? What's your actual?
The anniversary? I'm sorry if I didn't.
I missed it.
The party will be, celebration will be July 27, 2019.
Thank you.
And that does fall on a Saturday. Thank you very much.
Good years.
This gentleman brought up the American Legion, thank you. Our community lost a gentleman, Dr. George Wagner, recently. A gentleman and an officer. Salute. My name's Randy. Good evening. One moment, let me do my thingy, Harry. We get to smoke the peace pipe soon, don't we, Sherry?
Oh, yeah, you lost me.
Never an inhale.
[laughing].
Ah, drugs, okay, let me get this done and over with. Good evening, everybody, it's Cadillac City Council. Hey, there's trouble in River City, and we got crime in Cadillac. I've been coming here for five years now, harping on crime, and we are continuing to bring more people in and more crime to our fine city. We've got many building projects, we're overbuilding, overpopulating, we got this beautiful project ready to happen across the street, uptown. Cadillac Castles, we can't let that happen. That gentleman wanted to bring, he said, if I could build an 84 apartment unit, I would do that. We can't let that happen. We're taxing the infrastructure of the city Cadillac, we're overburdening the population of Cadillac. Then fluxing the growth of the new generation. I've been here for five years, please stop the crime. You know, Detroit, stress, stop the crimes, enjoy safe streets. That's all I'm asking, and that's not happening. We're bringing more people in all the time, and it's got to stop. You guys, you know my article in the paper, I'm not going there? Let's not mess up Cadillac Junction, let's build it all out there. Get her done, you know. Cadillac Castle, we don't want it. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We got to, we're overtaxed our wastewater system. We got to move the wall to infrastructure for Cadillac Castles. Now we got this in the paper, the, what do we got? Passa, whatever, we got the pollution, we're overburdening our lakes, our town.
Thank you.
We can't do it no more.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on October 15, along with the closed session that was held on October 15. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This evening, we do have some appointments, Sandy.
This is being recommended to approve the reappointment of Troy Knight to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on October 6, 2021.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Troy Knight to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Support.
Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And of note, Troy has actually been on the zoning board since 2004, so we appreciate him being willing to continue to serve.
The Zoning Board of Appeals just recently had a member pass away, and we're recommending to approve the appointment of Carl Genzink to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member. He's currently serving as an alternate for a partial term to expire on April 21, 2020.
Motion to approve the appointment of Carl Genzink to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a regular member for a partial term expiring April 21, 2020.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of John Smith to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 2, 2021.
Motion to approve the reappointment of John Smith to the Planning Commission.
Support.
He's been on for 10 years, too.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the appointment of Lisa Swanson to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on November 19, 2022.
Motion to approve the reappointment, or the appointment of Lisa Swanson to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries, and I see that Lisa's here this evening. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. There are several items this evening. With the first item, regarding bids and recommendation regarding the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus units for the Cadillac Fire Department. While perhaps pronounced similarly to SCUBA, it's missing the U, so these are not for underwater purposes, but rather, these are part of the regular turnout gear that they use whenever they're on scene, on a fire scene. There were three bids that came in, with the lowest bid going to Douglas Safety Systems. They happen to distribute the Avon product, which is made here in Cadillac, Michigan, from Avon Protection, and coincidentally, we happen to also have the manager of that facility in our audience this evening as well, Mr. Mike Hamner, who's here actually for another item later on in our agenda. The city did try applying on two separate occasions for a grant through FEMA. However, we were turned down, even though we did meet all of the criteria. But we are at a point now where this equipment does need to be replaced. It is critical, required equipment that our firefighters have, and we have fallen behind various National Fire Protection Association design additions, as it's written in the packet. The request this evening is that we award the acquisition to Douglas Safety Systems in the amount of $92,349.12. Funds are available in our general fund for this acquisition.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus to Douglas Safety Systems in the amount of $92,349.12.
Was this on our, was this on our radar when we were talking through the budget process this year?
It was. In fact, Owen can correct me if I'm wrong, but as a part of action we'll be taking later this evening, under our Budget Amendment section, we'll be making some tweaks to the budget that removes the anticipated grant and substituting the funds with the general fund dollars. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So we talked about in one of the work sessions that we were applying for the grant, and we had appropriated the funds both for the purchase and the grant, but that if we didn't get the grant, we would still need to purchase them, knowing that we were under kind of a timing, sort of a drop-dead date, that we needed to, needed to make the purchase. So they were in the CIP, we did have $134,000 budgeted for them, so they're coming in under that. We did plan on a 5% match, which is $6,700, and now we'll have to absorb the whole cost, but it is coming in at a little bit less than what we had projected.
Thank you for that confirmation.
Well, I don't think we have a support on the motion.
No, we don't.
I'll support it, but I want to have more conversation about this. So what's the drop dead, just getting the order in for the?
No, so I think Adam or one of the fire department personnel can probably address that a little bit better, but it's basically, we're several iterations of NFPA standards behind, and the equipment needs to be replaced, so Adam can speak to that. That's correct. We're two cycles behind NFPA standards regarding the SCBAs, and they are, they are needed. Anytime firefighters enter immediately dangerous to life and health, they need to have those SCBAs. And currently, we're already making repairs to the ones that we've had to keep them up and running, and we're coming up to the time where we're going to need to do either major repairs to the ones that we still have to try and, but they're still going to be behind by two cycles.
Does anyone know why we didn't get the grant that we thought we were going to?
Just want to throw this out. We never think we'll get one, we always try our best to get one. Getting a grant, especially through FEMA, I've heard is something similar to hitting a lottery. We have received FEMA funding before, but we have also been denied before, as we put in for a fire truck every year through FEMA, and continue to get denied. The amount that we request from FEMA, relatively speaking, is not that high of an amount compared to the types of grants that they award to much larger cities, but we don't know precisely why smaller towns such as Cadillac isn't receiving the funds, whereas some of the more larger communities, not just in Michigan, but across the country, tend to get the larger, the larger grants. But we'll continue to apply for these on an annual basis. Hopefully, one day, we'll, we'll get one. We did get one, as of, for instance, for radios, two or three years ago?
I remember that.
Yeah, a few years ago, and that was, that was quite a moment when the fire department was able to achieve that, but couldn't tell you precisely.
Thank you.
Councilmember King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item, under the manager's report, is regarding a recommendation for professional engineering consulting services. City of Cadillac utilizes several different engineering firms, depending upon the type of project that, that we're working on. For most of our, what we would call daily operational needs, they surround a lot of the road projects that we've been doing, based upon bond funds that we had received a couple of years ago. We had, through that process, entered into an agreement with Pryne &amp; Newhoff Engineering Services. However, those projects are quickly coming to a close, and we are certainly in need now of finalizing our approach moving forward, and subsequently, we issued out a request for qualifications to analyze what our options are as far as continuing with using a firm to provide our engineering services. Just as a quick aside, as a reminder, we did have a staff engineer who was with the city for almost four decades that retired not that long ago, and so utilizing the firm for our day-to-day has been something that really has worked out quite, quite well for the city. We received a whole handful of responses, I believe seven, to be, to be exact, and a group of staff evaluated those responses with Pryne &amp; Newhoff receiving the most total points received. The areas that were analyzed included relevant experience, demonstrated ability, proximity to the city, familiarity with related agencies, and references. The Pryne &amp; Newhoff received 484 points, which was the highest received. The second highest received was Fleisen Van De Brink out of Traverse City, Pryne &amp; Newhoff is out of Cadillac. The third highest received was Wade Trim, also out of Traverse City. The recommendation this evening is for the city to enter into a new agreement with Pryne &amp; Newhoff for their services. The recommendation would be to have the contract go until December of 2023, which is a five-year period. We would then also request that there's an automatic additional five-year term available for the parties to execute, that would then take the contract out to 2028. Certainly, there was language in the contract should we need to go in a different direction at any point in time, or if they needed to go in a different direction at any point in time to sever that relationship with the city. The city certainly has a strong working relationship with Pryne &amp; Newhoff Engineering. The hourly rates for the various professionals that would be assigned to the city were compared across the board with the other engineering companies. It was essentially determined that the Pryne &amp; Newhoff hourly rates were very favorable as well, and that's part of why we're looking at making this recommendation to the city council this evening. The principal with Pryne &amp; Newhoff, Connie Hauck, that we've been using, is here in the audience, should you have any questions, perhaps for her. The team that evaluated this included myself, our finance director, our community development director, our operations manager in Public Works, and last but certainly not least, our utilities director, Jeff Dietlin, as well. So if there are any questions, certainly throw them at me, otherwise, I kindly suggest a motion.
In terms of cost containment?
Mm-hmm.
Or cost comparison, you know, how does that happen with an RFQ, as opposed to bidding the services out?
So the, the RFQs, or the qualification proposals that we received, also included a price proposal by all of the, by all of the agencies that submitted. The scoring that we did was based on the qualifications, not based on their prices. But if you will, as an aside, looking at where those prices are, Pryne &amp; Newhoff is right there as the most favorable. Regarding, you know, potential costs, it's going to depend on how busy we are with, with civil engineering-type infrastructure projects, depending on, you know, how often we have, you know, new roads being constructed, new public places being constructed, all of those fees, you know, are going to vary from year to year based upon our activity levels, so...
So can you share with us, you know, our, Bruce was here for almost four decades?
Right.
And so now, we don't have an engineer on staff, were there some comparisons done in regards to our cost when we had an engineer on staff, and when we have had not an engineer on staff?
Sure. So it's important to note that the analysis you're, you're referring to isn't...
It's like herding cats.
What's that?
It's like herding cats.
Right, well, it's not, not that clean-cut, and the reason why is because when we did have a staff engineer here, it was just one person, and even with some of the more simpler tasks, engineering-related tasks, we still outsourced the, some of the drawing and some of the other design features to a firm, such as Pryne &amp; Newhoff, actually in several cases, to provide, to provide that additional labor. So it was, it was never just the singular, one person, here's what the fixed cost is, no matter what project was coming in front.
I understand.
Which would make any number that I would give you not a very relevant one, only because he had another slew of engineers or a whole other firm behind him, essentially at his beck and call when needed to assist with projects. Which is why, you know, as a, for instance, when we did the, the street projects, we authorized a contract with an engineering firm, happened to be Pryne &amp; Newhoff, to, to provide all that labor. What we're saving certainly are the fixed costs of the overhead, the salary, the benefits and whatnot that go along with that position, that when you would add it all up, is certainly a six-figure number, which is, you know, now going to be paid over time on an as-needed basis to, you know, a firm of, of engineers that would be providing those services. I don't know, Owen, if you have any clarification to what I said that you want to throw out, but I think that answers your question.
You answer my, you answer my question.
Okay, all right, thank you. So...
Well, I think it's a good question. I mean, we have to go, we're really saving money by not hiring our own staff.
Right, right.
Well, I think, you know, I think that it's a very, it's a, it's a very good question, but it's also a very interesting one, because when things slow up, and eventually, they will...
Our costs go down.
Well, no. Well, yes, yes, costs go down if you're using a firm. If you have a full-time staff person...
They remain the same.
Those costs remain the same. Likewise, when, you know, you do have projects going forward, even when you still have a single body there that is a certified engineer, that one person may not be able to yet do it all on their own, and is still going to need some assistance from an outside consultant. So I'm not suggesting that having a staff person on board in-house is a bad thing. I would love to have a staff person on board in-house and still be able to tap into experts out in the field through, you know, consulting services on an as-needed basis, but we're just not equipped with the necessary resources to do that at this point. And as a, another, for instance, he happens to be working, I believe, part-time with the firm, he's part of their qualifications as some of the local talents, and his retirement.
Bruce is?
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I got it.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for professional engineering consulting services to Pryne &amp; Newhoff of Cadillac, beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2023, with the opportunity for the contract to automatically renew for an additional five years through December 31, 2028.
Support.
So if the contract automatically renews, does that mean it doesn't have to come in front of council?
I believe so. Is that correct?
That's the way that it was, it was proposed, yep.
And I noticed in the...
But it is breakable. I mean, it is, you know, with a certain limited amount of written notice, and I think that that's basically why. It's the same type of arrangement with the, except that there's no term attached to, like a city attorney, we used a similar approach as a professional engineering service.
And it limits the amount of growth, you know, cost?
So as a, as a, for instance, and correct me if I'm, if I'm going off the rails here, but with our refuse agreement, if there were not going to be any changes to the agreement, if we didn't amend or change anything, I don't believe that would have come back here either, it would have automatically extended. So if there are changes, then we would need to get those changes approved.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
King?
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And even with all of the questions, I will tell you that we do appreciate all of the hard work that Pryne &amp; Newhoff does for us, and the fact that they're a local company makes that relationship even, even better, so thank you. Okay.
Keep, keep going?
Keep going.
Okay.
Keep going.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is a report out that I'm required to do whenever we have an emergency purchase. This is in regards to the property located at 117 West Cass Street. That is currently home to the market at Cadillac Commons, formerly home to the building commonly known as the Forbes Building. Unfortunately, over the summer, there was a significantly large-sized underground storage tank that was discover, discovered, rather, when demolition activities were occurring to make way for the market, and through that discovery, it has led to the need for the associated contaminated soils to be disposed as a part of the overall site preparation for that, for that site. In general, as the write-up states, the contaminants consisted of various metals and chemicals such as tetrachloroethylene, or PCE, due to very, due to timing variables that were outside of our control, such as the time for the environmental analysis and guidance from the for the environmental analysis and guidance from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to be completed, once information was available, the city utilized the contractor that was already mobilized on-site, Dunbar Excavating, to haul the required soils and storage tank away without delay. The city hauled the waste to Republic's landfill at a special negotiated rate of $5 per ton, which was more economical than other disposal facility options. The cost for this unforeseen expenditure required, excuse me, the cost for this unforeseen required environmental cleanup was $94,077.93. That includes the landfill fees, the hauling fees, and environmental consulting and testing costs. Funds received from the state of Michigan for personal property tax reimbursement, which came in significantly higher than budgeted this year, are being utilized for this expense, which is a very good thing. It's, if anything, we could say we caught a break because of the additional funds that were coming in. Otherwise, it would have certainly been a dip into the general fund. There is no action for the City Council to take, but as we are now seeing these expenses coming out, I am required to report on them in this setting accordingly. The, Mayor, okay, thank you. Just trying to keep up with all my paperwork here. The next item, our amendments to our non-union employees' benefit schedule. We do have Todd Kiwi and Owen here that are absolutely going to jump in as soon as I say something wrong, right, guys? Not going to let me go too far off the rails?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we had a bad year. Our utilization was higher than what our trends have been in the past, and that's an unfortunate thing, but it is something that happens from time to time with organizations. Obviously, you know, we're providing a coverage for our people, for our staff. We have analyzed what our options were as far as our renewals go, negotiated with our provider, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, and the plan that we're using is the HMO, the Blue Carrier Network Plan. It's a plan that's very widely accepted by providers here in Cadillac. We have accordingly increased the co-pays, and as you'll see, there's a chart within the City Council write-up, rather significantly on a percentage basis for all of the different types of visits that an employee may have, ranging from your general office visit to a specialist visit, to chiropractor, urgent care, ER, and our prescription pays. We have seen that with these increases, we'll be able to stay in compliance with Public Act 152 that sets a hard cap. It is our ideal and vision to remain under that hard cap. We are certainly not planning for there to be a day where the utilization rates put us at a point where our increases to our costs go, you know, if you will, through the roof, where we would need to ask for a formal waiver by the City Council for the city to contribute more versus having it all come down on the employees. But we believe that we're providing a very good product, very good insurance product to our staff at very reasonable rates, and that we're in a position where we can make these changes across the board that will keep us in compliance with Public Act 152 by essentially putting this additional cost on our personnel. Now, obviously, putting additional cost on our personnel is the last thing the city manager or anybody within the organization wants to do, but as I mentioned before, our rates are very reasonable, our insurance is very good, and we believe that, you know, overall, this is the best approach moving things forward, because right now, you know, it's not, the sky's not falling yet. We may at some point hit that point, and should we ever do, as I mentioned before, we're certainly going to ask the City Council for a waiver. A waiver by, would basically mean that the city would be asked to contribute an additional sum of money in order to not move all of those costs onto the employees, thereby still, you know, remaining within the, within compliance. There are, within your packet, a lot of information that shows what we're adding and what we're taking away. I don't think it necessarily benefits the public to read through sections of personnel-related benefit materials, but our recommendation this evening is that we make the necessary amendment to our schedule that is in your packet, and we move forward with our open enrollment accordingly. I don't know if Owen or Todd, you guys worked very hard on this. If you want to add any clarifying points of information, anything more that I did not put in, certainly, this is the time to provide that.
I don't think I have anything to add. Just answer questions if there are any.
So, what I don't see here is what their month, is it monthly contribution is?
Yeah, the monthly premium. Do you happen to have that?
That's not on here.
Yeah, it's 20, 25 single, 55 two-person, and 75 family, up from 15, 25, and 35. And the reason it's not in the schedule is because we're trying to remain flexible and more reactive to changes. If we have it baked right into the schedule, then we're, we can't just make the changes as necessary.
Todd, I need you to talk into a mic. Sorry.
Yeah, I understand why it's not in the language, but that could have been provided to council, I think.
Crazy how much these things go up.
You know, is...
That still really isn't that much. I know it's a huge increase, but that's not that much. There's a lot of people that would be really happy paying that.
It's, as I mentioned, using the word reasonable, you know, it's, it is a, it is an enormous increase based on a percentage basis.
Yeah.
Based on a dollar basis. It's incredibly reasonable for the insurance that we're providing, and that's why although there's that option, you know, that some communities have had to do, which is to ask for a waiver, we're not there yet. I hope we never get there, to be honest, obviously. I hope that we're able to, you know, ride out the rough patch that we're in right now and, you know, keep things very reasonable for a very long time to come.
And frankly, we can't afford a waiver.
Right.
I think that's a big part of that, is we need to keep it, that's part of why PA 152 exists, is to just be a tool for cost control. And so, you know, it's beyond philosophic. You still have to be able to pay the bills. And so, for us, I think the commitment is, we need to set it at a level that we can afford to pay.
Owen, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unique to just the city. I think that many businesses have to share that cost with their employees more and more, so. Okay. Would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes in Schedule 3.0 of the non-union employees' benefit schedule as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. So, Mike's going to give us a little brief on marijuana. Given the recent proposal that was put to the voters of the state of Michigan regarding the recreational side and how it was approved, the City Council is not being asked tonight to take any action in any shape or form. We're just simply giving a quick brief and then rolling out what we think would be the best next thing.
So, we have a lot of municipal clients who obviously are interested in how they're going to regulate this use. To some degree, you know, this is kind of bound up with the land use issues. The Proposal One, dealing with what I'll loosely call recreational marijuana, we expect to take effect about December the 6th, and that's because the State Board of Campus Service has a meeting scheduled, and then 10 days after that, presuming they certify the results, the Proposal One would take effect. That does not address at all whether or not the city is going to regulate that use. So, for example, Proposal One, and there are a lot of questions that are unanswered in terms of how it's going to apply. It's similar to what we went through with medical marijuana, where, you know, the courts had to resolve questions for nearly a decade now about how it was going to be implemented. And I expect the same's going to happen with the recreational side. There is a difference, though, in that on the recreational side, municipalities have probably three different choices. One is do nothing, in which case you may get facilities licensed and permitted, and you may not have much to say about that when it's done by the state, and the state's got a year to implement that. The second would be to regulate it. The Proposal One specifically allows the city to regulate the use. That includes two components. One is to completely prohibit the land use, the commercial sales aspect of that, or to regulate the time, manner, and place. And so, what all of our municipal clients are doing is reviewing Proposal One, and then we'll reach a determination on the policy decision about whether or not you want to allow the commercial establishment of those sales here. That's a decision that the council has to make initially first, and then, depending on the scope of that, to determine where it should be permitted, what kind of regulations will apply. It has a lot of the similarities with regulating alcohol and liquor stores, that is, how far from a church are you going to allow it, or a school, or those types of aspects, but there really is no timeframe for you to do this, but I would say certainly before the state starts implementing the rules and granting licenses, which is next year sometime. That said, you're probably better served by making a decision sooner rather than later, because you then have to go through this process of determining under what circumstances, where, time, manner, and place regulations are going to apply, if the city decides you're going to regulate the use rather than completely prohibit the use. When I say use, I use that term loosely in referring to land use, not the use of marijuana itself, which is lawful once it takes effect, takes effect in December, under those rules, under Proposal One. So, I'm more specifically focused on the land use, the commercial sales, and establishment of those places in municipalities.
And the medical side as well.
And the medical side as well, although the medical side is opting in versus opting out, but yeah.
So, looking at the road ahead, I think it would make sense for when we have a full council to bring this on our agenda, have a more thorough debrief and presentation, allow the council then for the opportunity to really get into a discussion as to how you'd like to perhaps move it forward. And I think we talk about both medical and marijuana at the same time, medical and recreational marijuana at the same time, so that pending direction from the City Council, legal and staff can then work accordingly as to how we want to move any of it forward or not move it forward or whatnot. But we had commented that we would talk about this after the vote, so, you know, the votes happened. You know, as Mike said, it's going to be a year at least before the state issues any licenses for facilities on the recreational side. But, you know, it could take, if ultimately the city determines that it is going to regulate this type of use, there are, I think, six different classifications of facilities under the recreational side, and five different classifications of facilities under the medical side that we need to resolve how we're going to regulate. And so, that will take time. So, you know, while there's still, you know, time out there, we should probably start sooner versus later, and once I know we'll have a full body here, I think we can add that to an agenda and have a good conversation. Sure. Doesn't mean you can't say anything now if there's anything anyone wants to say, just saying that was the point.
Yeah, sorry, so I'm... So, I'm prepared to talk about this, but in my head, from what I remember, when we were having discussions related to medical, so some of the decisions that we're going to be making are whether or not we actually have storefronts. Is that what you're calling commercial?
There are, well, they call them, they call them facilities, and then there's classifications. And there's, I believe, five different classifications.
Five just in lab.
In medical, and then six in recreational, and I, don't hold me to that, I could be, I could be off on that a little bit, but one of those classifications, one of those classifications of facilities include your storefront. Others include, you know, research and laboratory-type facilities, testing facilities, growing facilities, transportation facilities, distribution facilities. So, there's, there's a whole swarm of them that you have to take into consideration, and for each and every one of those classifications, essentially, the city needs to determine, if it's going to allow any of these, where should this use be allowed, and then what other kinds of, you know, restrictions or regulations would you like to put in place? You could cap the number as a, for instance, that you'd allow to have. You could put in distance, you know, parameters, they can't be within 500 feet of each other, and, you know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet of a school or something like that. You could put all sorts of different, you know, regulations in place for each of these different kinds of facilities, or you could say, you know what, we're going to allow these two types of facilities, but not these three, or we're going to, you know, so you, there's a whole lot that you need to wrap your heads around and talk about. You know, we're inching that forward now because, you know, the question has been answered, right, at least by the, by the state, on the recreation side of things. And just because you're not going to see, bless you, just because you're not going to see a store or a facility on the recreation side of things receiving a license to open from the state for at least a year, as Mike mentioned, the law will allow for people to legally consume in their own homes recreational marijuana before then. I mean, that happens as soon as the election, was it 20 days, you said, after the election is certified?
10.
10 days after the election is certified. So, it doesn't answer how people can acquire the recreational marijuana, because there are no stores yet for them to acquire it by, but...
I'm pretty sure they'll figure that out.
They'll figure that out, yep. You are allowed to have a certain amount on your, on your person and a certain amount in your home, and you can grow plants, you know, for that purpose as well in your home. So, that's how they'd acquire it, they grow the plants.
Grow a plant.
Cultivate it.
Isn't there something related, I'm sorry, to the transportation, to the secured transportation?
Yes, it's one of the classifications.
And there are, you know, there are other issues that are going to come up too, particularly for the city and other employers too, which is, you know, how do you regulate the use of that when it's lawful? So, you know, Thursday night, somebody's out, they use marijuana, they come to work Friday, hop in a municipal vehicle and have an accident. At what level then are they impaired for purposes of driving that municipal vehicle? Whether the city's going to allow any use, because you can still be terminated for using marijuana. So, it's going to present some issues that, on a policy basis, the city and all of our clients are have to, will have to consider, along with, you know, how will insurance policies deal with this, and insurance of municipal vehicles and accidents and testing, and what it means, and all of those questions are left unanswered right now.
I have a question too, because we got questions about this when we were at the C-.
when we were at the senior center. A lot of people were saying that, or not a lot of people, but people were saying that their neighbors were growing and then asking what we were going to do about that, but...
What were we going to do about the smell?
Yeah, what were we going to do about the smell? But just, I mean, if they got their medical license from the state, how is this going to translate into recreational and people growing it in their homes? Can you talk about that for a second?
Yeah, so as I read proposal one, it would allow, absent any other action from the city determining where that use can or cannot be permitted, would otherwise allow medical facilities to be combined with recreational facilities. Now, that's more on the commercial endeavor. But there are specific provisions under proposal one that would allow people to grow and use and, you know...
Up to 12, I think.
Yeah, how, how these play out as, with respect to, say, smells and adjacent properties, I don't know yet. So it's sort of a, you know, it took, the Court of Appeals just issued a couple of opinions, I think in October, on medical marijuana. And we're still litigating those issues. It's a decade old now. So there are a lot of unanswered questions in these proposals. And so it's going to work itself out in due course. But along the way, there's going to be some clarifications that are going to need to take effect, or for the courts to kind of define what it means and how, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will bring this forward again. Well, perhaps we don't have as much on our agenda and we'll have a more robust conversation about how to move it. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Moving on, moving on under introduction of ordinances and resolutions. The first two items are regarding the same public space. And so I thought I would just create or provide some opening remarks before I get into some of the, some of the details. The city has a facility that we call the community center, but I think it's still more perhaps commonly known as the Naval Reserve Center. It's off of Chestnut Street and Lake Cadillac immediately across the street from the Cadillac High School football field. Given the way the city charter treats this property because of how the property is zoned and its location specifically, its uses are very, very restricted. The tenants of the facility must meet those qualifications, that being they need to be a nonprofit and/or a church or religious type of organization. Currently, that facility is somewhat tired. However, I will say that the three tenants that we have there have put in a tremendous amount of effort in bringing it back to life. The tenants are the Cadillac Area Senior Center, the Wexford Genealogy Organization, which is what our first item is regarding, and then the Up North Arts Association, which is our second item that we're talking about tonight. The city subsidizes, without any question, the uses that are in that facility by providing them the space that they're being provided. The facility, or the organizations, rather, the organizations, rather, would not otherwise be able to perhaps be out on their own. Specifically, when we look at the Wexford Genealogy Association, or WGO for short, back in 2012, the city provided them with an incubator-type of lease to get them going. They have shown some great growth. In fact, they have relocated from sort of a smaller nook into a more accessible location for people to come and visit on the main level of the, of the community center, or the Naval Reserve Center. As an aside, I think that a lot of people may, may think that the Wexford Genealogy Association only provides services for those people interested in learning about genealogy that have roots here in Cadillac or in Wexford County. But I will advise council and certainly the public that that is not the case. While it certainly is their emphasis and focus, and they have a lot of interesting materials on that, they also have experts that can assist people with ancestry-related software, internet, you know, genealogy research, and also have ways of helping people learn about genealogy regardless of where you're from. So it's, it's not just something restricted to people that have families or roots from Cadillac or the Cadillac area. Due to several factors, and I'm just going to refer back to my notes here, the age and condition of the facility that they're in, the fact that they only utilize the space for approximately four hours per week. We are willing to propose to city council for consideration tonight that we reduce their base rent to a more manageable number of $250 per month retroactively and hold that lease flat through the end of 2019. Essentially, the genealogy association is asking for the ability to get back into another incubator type of, type of established lease with us. With the difference that, at that point, once we, once they hit the end of that, that it would go up effective 2020 by the consumer price index, consumer price index. We have included the lease in your packet in the very first page of the cover page, which is the amendment to the lease. It shows what that schedule would be. And we do believe that this is a use that would be of benefit to the community to continue to see here in our Naval Reserve Center, here in our community center, as I mentioned before. This is a facility that does not have many options available to it in terms of applicable tenants. And we think that it's been a good partnership and relationship with the city. And staff would advocate support for the amendment to their lease accordingly.
So they've been paying their lease all along since January 1st of 2012?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending, the ordinance approving a lease agreement with Wexford Genealogy Organization and set a public hearing for December 17th.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fookins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item, again, it's related to the community center, is with respect to Up North Arts, Inc. The city entered into a lease with Up North Arts, Inc., June 27th of 2017. That organization was brand-new at that point in time. And similar to the type of leasing arrangement that we had with Wexford Genealogy Association, we agreed upon an incubator-style lease with Up North Arts, bless you, with Up North Arts, Inc. accordingly, to help them come in and get themselves established. Over the last, you know, 15 months since they've occupied that space, Up North Arts, Inc. has done a tremendous job in completely rehabilitating and renovating spaces that otherwise would not have been, not have been usable. Not just spaces for them to use as classroom or workshop spaces, or as office-ing type spaces, but spaces for the public to benefit by, such as the classroom and workshop-type spaces, but also bathrooms. Something that the public definitely benefits by if they're visiting that end of the building. The council packet referenced a, an addendum that is actually out in front of you this evening that shows approximately $33,497 of total costs and in-kind donations have been put into the facility. Up North Arts, Inc. was unable to meet their leasing requirements to the city as they were essentially spending dollars that otherwise would have come to us by improving the space that the city does own. And so these are all improvements, certainly, that are happening to the building that the city, that the city does own. That being stated, we certainly needed to resolve the issue regarding their rental with us, and that's why we brought it to the city council tonight. In a similar fashion as we did with the Wexford Genealogy Association, tonight what we've brought forward is an amendment to the lease that takes into consideration all of the thousands of dollars of improvements that have been made to the spaces that they're occupying. And it also essentially resets or reestablishes an incubator-type of lease agreement with the city for those spaces. In speaking directly with the current president of Up North Arts, actually, as late as today, they are enthusiastic about what their future may hold. Certainly, it's going to be challenging for them as they continue to try to provide offerings that people are interested in participating in. Hopefully, we won't be back here a couple of years from now, or three years from now, when the incubation period essentially comes off. And they're looking at a significantly higher rent. But, you know, anything is possible. I suggested that they look at it as a challenge to really try to, you know, develop and continue to develop their programming and their offerings. Again, this is a wonderful community organization that we have. We're fortunate that they're in our community and the services that they're providing to, to the community in this space otherwise perhaps would not be provided elsewhere. Back to my earlier comments that, you know, this is a building that is being subsidized, not unlike other recreational-type facilities that you may find in other communities that are subsidized by the city or the municipality in which they are located. So the recommendation this evening would be to approve the amendment as it's presented in your packet.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
How much rent have they not paid since?
They have not paid since the inception.
Yeah, so what's the value of that?
According to the sheet in front of you, $33,497 is what they've put in to it. And Owen, do you know what the rent value is? He's doing the calculation.
Yeah, it'd be about $9,000.
About $9,000?
Yep.
So what I'm not seeing here is what they are going to be charged beginning November 1.
It's on the, yeah, it's on the first page of the lease agreement cover sheet.
Which is?
$500 a month.
I, lease agreement?
It's the bottom.
It's $500 a month?
Oh, wait, 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 I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't scroll down.
I know, there's only a couple hundred pages in the packet today, so...
Well, there were four, there were four things to open for this particular thing, and I looked at all of them, but I didn't scroll through them. So, beginning November 1, they're going to pay $500 a month. And then the other part of this is what, extending?
So it would go from now until the end of 2020, it's at 500. And then it starts 2021, it's 750. And then in 2022, it goes to a little over 1,100. And so that's why, you know, it's, with all good intentions, certainly, they believe they'll be able to achieve that. But we certainly could be back here in the future having another conversation. I just don't know, so...
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending, ordinance approving a lease agreement with Up North Arts, Inc. Set a public hearing for December 17th, 2018.
Councilmember King, Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fookins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. If, by the way, if I wasn't clear regarding the WGO lease, that's what you've done as well, is you've set a public hearing date. Because these are all done by orders. I think we're finally, at the moment, for our two special guests here. So, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions this evening, we have, we have four. The first one, as I get to it in my packet here, I am quite excited to talk about publicly. There has been certainly a lot of conversation going on for, my God, quite some time on this, on this topic, between members of the city staff, myself included, and the Cadillac Industrial Fund, along with members of our Cadillac Area Industrial Group. This item, and I'm just going to read the title, "Resolution to Support Environmental Cleanup Activities and Create a Renewable Energy Resource for the City of Cadillac at the Property Commonly Known as the Mitchell Bentley Property." This property is the property that was burned down several years ago. Couple of years ago, the city acquired it through a rather lengthy public process. And we have been tirelessly working, very collaboratively, with the Cadillac Area Industrial Fund in trying to put together an opportunity that will get the site cleaned up and get a, get a user on that site. Tonight, in the audience, are two key members from that board. We have Craig Hewitt from BNP Manufacturing, and we have Mike Hamner from Avon Protection. The resolution is rather lengthy, but I think it would be helpful, perhaps, if, if I read some of it, if not all of it, into the public record. I think it's, it's good for the public to understand what's going on here since this has really been quite a, quite an ordeal over the years. So, just going to start. Whereas the vacant Cadillac Industrial Property, commonly known as the Mitchell Bentley Property, is an abandoned site with significant environmental contamination from past industrial users. And whereas it is in the best interests of the Cadillac community to clean up and redevelop the Mitchell Bentley Property. And whereas the city of Cadillac has obtained the Mitchell Bentley Property through the property tax delinquency process in an effort to take over the control of the site with the objective of revitalizing this property so that the environmental contamination can be mitigated and the rubble removed. And whereas the city of Cadillac, working in collaboration with the Cadillac Industrial Fund, has negotiated the removal of a state-of-Michigan environmental lien of $356,050.12, and has secured a grant from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to complete an assessment of the environmental conditions of the Mitchell Bentley Property. And whereas the results of the environmental assessment have confirmed a response activity cost associated with the Mitchell Bentley Property of approximately $1 million. And whereas it is recognized by the city of Cadillac that without outside funding from sources like the MDEQ Brownfield Grant Program, that the Mitchell Bentley Property will not be redeveloped. And whereas the city of Cadillac is working in collaboration with Cadillac Industrial Fund to prepare an initial Brownfield Grant proposal for submittal to the MDEQ. And whereas the Cadillac Industrial Fund has secured a commitment from Spartan Renewable Energy, a subsidiary of Wolverine Power Cooperative, and active member of the Cadillac Industrial Fund, to develop a solar energy project at the Mitchell Bentley Property. And whereas the city of Cadillac's vision statements reference, where and when applicable, environmental... environmentally green practices will be utilized, and whereas this investment in the solar energy project will provide an estimate of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt-hours of renewable energy to the City of Cadillac and qualifies the City of Cadillac for Brownfield Grant and loan funding, and whereas the MDEQ has provided an initial positive assessment of the City of Cadillac's preliminary Brownfield Grant and Loan Proposal that would provide up to a five hundred thousand dollar grant, plus up to a five hundred thousand dollar loan, and whereas the Cadillac Industrial Fund supports the concept of the City of Cadillac entering into a development agreement that would clean up the Mitchell Bentley property, utilize significant outside grant and loan funding, put the property back on the property tax rolls, and create a renewable energy source, the Cadillac Industrial Fund has committed up to fifty thousand dollars in funding to fund the cleanup and future MDEQ Brownfield Grant and Loan Match, and whereas the City of Cadillac recognizes the time, talent, and monetary resource contribution the Cadillac Industrial Fund has given towards the objective of revitalizing the Mitchell Bentley property for the benefit of the entire Cadillac area community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City of Cadillac, Michigan does hereby support the concept of entering into a development agreement to clean up Mitchell Bentley site and obtain renewable energy under the following, but not by way of limitation terms. Upon invitation from the MDEQ, the City of Cadillac will prepare a final Brownfield Grant and Loan Application for the Mitchell Bentley property that may result in receiving a five hundred thousand dollar grant and five hundred thousand dollar loan. In support of the grant application, the City of Cadillac will consider and execute agreements that will be necessary, including but not limited to a potential property transfer agreement by the Mitchell Bentley property to the Cadillac Industrial Fund, B, a DEQ required development agreement with Spartan Renewable Energy and/or other parties such as Consumers Energy that will require an estimated two thousand dollar monthly renewable energy premium over a twenty-year timeframe, C, property lease agreement with Spartan Renewable Energy and/or other parties. Item number three is also contribute fifty thousand dollars from the Cadillac Brownfield Tax Income and Financing Program and/or other city funding sources to match the Cadillac Industrial Fund's fifty thousand dollar commitment to fund the cleanup and future MDEQ Brownfield Grant and Loan Match. Four is council support, if necessary, for special land use requests. Be it further resolved that the City of Cadillac recognizes that while the negotiated green energy rate is expected to be at a premium compared to standard consumer energy electricity rates, the value, the purchase, the value of the purchase of the solar renewable energy is by, one, securing an MDEQ Brownfield Grant and Loan that will facilitate the completion of response activities for the environmental benefit of the City of Cadillac, two, revitalizing an abandoned blighted City of Cadillac industrial property, three, providing a portion of the City of Cadillac's energy needs with clean renewable energy source, far outweighs the additional premium cost of the renewable energy. That is the, believe it or not, Reader's Digest version of what we have been going through for, I don't know how many years, two and a half, yeah. So, it is involving many, many moving parts. By no means does this resolution of support equate to you seeing a solar panel put on site tomorrow, but this essentially sets the table, formally putting in place support from the legislative body of the city for all of the aforementioned agreements to start getting drafted up. It's gonna take, you know, some time yet for this to happen, would not be possible if not for the Cadillac Industrial Fund, specifically those people that are here in the audience today, and for those that are not here today. Brian Warner, the environmental professional with Wolverine Power, has also been an instrumental person involved in this process since the beginning. It's been an incredible team effort, and one where everyone is trying to frankly put their best foot forward in getting the site cleaned up, obtaining outside funding from the state to help with that process, and getting it back on the tax rolls. So, this is a major milestone in moving down that direction, and certainly would request and advocate for support from the City Council.
That's great. Good job.
Yeah.
Good job.
You know, you've, you've kept us informed what was going on in a way, but I didn't really know what the end product was, or I know it's not really the end, end, but where it was going, and, and when I was looking this over, it just, it really made me happy, it made me smile, it made me really excited about being on the City Council and, and putting that vision in front of us that, you know, we really do want to use renewable energy, if at all possible. So, I really liked that piece of this.
Does anyone want to add? They stayed here.
Yeah, they should have a chance to talk.
This is, good evening. It has been quite a journey to get to where we're at, and we're not there yet, but it at least gets us, you know, thirteen acres, the, the solar is only about two and a half, three acres of it, so there's completely, you know, a, a clean slate for a new industry to expand existing industry, whatever, on the, the other ten acres. So, it's not by any means gonna be just solar panels out there, this is, but this is that vehicle that facilitates getting that bladed, the structures down, the area cleaned, and actually getting some benefit out of it while it's marketed, the rest of the property. So, certainly appreciate the support from the City Council on this, on this project. It's been, it's been a long time coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know the community, the community's really been, you know, wanting this to...
Asking about their property for a long time.
What are you gonna do with this? So, it's, it's really good. Thank you for all, everybody for your work on this.
Yeah, you bet. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to support environmental cleanup activities and create a renewable energy resource for the City of Cadillac at the property commonly known as the Mitchell Bentley property.
Support. House Member Shippers?
Yes.
Woman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Have at it.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I am going to essentially punt this next one to our Community Development Director. He is going to provide the City Council with a brief of what the Planning Commission is recommending. By no means is this a rehearing of what happened at the Planning Commission level, but you will see some pretty pictures, if you will, on the screens regarding Cadillac Lofts. John?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you this evening is the final site plan approval for Cadillac Lofts LLC. You have, in the past, had the chance to hold a public hearing and, and go through the project in detail when they submitted their submission for mixed plan unit development with a sketch plan associated with it. The plan that's before you tonight has not in any significant way changed in the way of the general operation of the site, the building orientations and sizes, the access, and a lot of those issues has remained largely the same, so I don't, I'll go over a few specific items, but in general, they have stayed very much consistent with the plan that you've already approved as part of the sketch plan approval. As some background, before you on the screens is the dates that the different bodies have approved the plan in the, in the past, and there were public hearings both before the Planning Commission and the City Council, so there was at least two public opportunities to, for people to come forward and address both bodies on any issues that they may have had on the project. Most recently, the Planning Commission provided its final approval of the site plan at their meeting on October twenty-second, and that was done by unanimous vote, also recommending to the City Council that they approve the final site plan, subject to several conditions which are included in the resolution that you had before you to use for an action item this evening. Just a little bit of a recap, the Cadillac Lofts LLC is a mixed-use project, the two, there will be two L-shaped buildings, the bottom floor, first floor of both buildings will be used for commercial purposes, the lead ideas are for restaurants, retail, possibly some other uses, but that would be the focus of the initial efforts to occupy the main floor. The upper three floors of both buildings would be used for residential. There will be a total in both buildings, which would be done as part of two phases, to achieve a total of eighty-four total apartments, and that eighty-four would be broken down by twelve two-bedroom units, forty-eight one-bedroom, and twenty-four efficiency apartments. The site plan is up on the screen, the brown buildings are the L-shaped buildings which comprise the, the main portion of the development. As you can see, all the access to the site has been taken off of Mitchell Site, off of Mitchell Street, has moved entirely to the rear portion of the project coming off of Shelby Street. That is a very good thing in terms of safety, there will not be conflicts on Mitchell with turning movements, people parking on Mitchell, and people also trying to enter and exit the project. Likewise, the, there would be less conflict, conflict on the side streets, because again, the traffic coming out of the parking lots and alleys will not be trying to compete with the turning movements of people coming into and off of the site. And so, Shelby Street, which is relatively a very low-traffic-volume street, will be the access and egress point for all the traffic coming off of the site. You can see, see that the parking area in gray, that will be a secured parking area, it will be gated, that parking will be primarily for the residential tenants of the project. The parking lot that would be to the east of Shelby is a forty-six-space parking lot, that would be used for the commercial portion of the project, and there will also be about a forty-six-space parking available, which will be provided on the on-street parking, and the city will be undertaking a project to improve some of the on-street parking around that block. You can see that there's a certain amount of green space and, and tree cover, not a lot of trees, but it is an urban site, and they've also provided the adequate green areas for snow removal and stockpiling of, of snow for the project site. The parking, the total requirement that the city's putting forward is a hundred and thirty-nine spaces, being fifty-five for commercial, eighty-four for residential. The total provided parking for the entire project is a hundred and seventy-eight spaces, so that's exceeding what the city is required as a minimum, and that provided parking is coming with a hundred and thirty-two spaces, both on the main block of the project and the other forty-six spaces in their separate lot, and then the forty-six spaces that the city is providing on-street. And this would be the view of the building. The only concern kind of that was addressed at Planning Commission, and this was something that the developer didn't have a lot of control over, you see that there's a retaining wall in the foreground, ideally, you would try to have open access along the entire frontage of the site on Mitchell, the right side of the picture is, or, I believe the right side is on Mitchell Street, or maybe, yeah, it's, it's on the front, front view is, and really what happens is there's a limitation on people on Mitchell being able to walk up and address the retail in the building, and so, the developer has agreed as part of one of the conditions to, once the tenancy is determined for the ground floor, to work with us to create as many openings as possible in that retaining wall, to maximize access to the first floor. And the reason for that was basically a really strong concern about liability, they could have had a open, open staircase along the entire frontage, but that would introduce a lot of liability for falls and so forth, and they did not think that was the best way to go. So, they have agreed to work with the city on maximizing the openings to their retaining wall on the project site. You can see that they are using a variety of materials as required by the ordinance, and they've spent a great deal of time trying to create their mix in concert with what the market demand is for the area, and they've also certainly been made aware of what the market studies that have been done recently, both through AES and through Networks Northwest, to try to design and craft their land use scenarios to those market studies. And just finally, given the Planning Commission's recommendation, and my, my recommendation would be that the resolution that Foster Swift has prepared for you be approved this evening, there would not be another step in the site planning process, the remaining step that would probably come before the city would just be the approval of a development agreement with the developer, which is also a part of the approval process for the MPUD process. So, this kind of ends kind of the site planning scenario and land use portion, and then it just gets into more, just more of the detailed work on timing and how exactly they're going to work through the process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
I just wanted to add as a follow-up comment to John's presentation that, you know, this is another example of, it's sort of been a long time coming, similar to the Mitchell Bentley project, you know, this has been a subject area and a location that's been talked about for many years with a lot of different people, and then with John and I and, and the host of a couple of different developers, there's been conversation on this site for at least three years, I think, before we're finally here tonight, and so, it's, it's a, it's quite a relief that it's been able to get packaged up and has gone through the robust public process so that it's here tonight for sort of final consideration.
The department heads have all been, kept apprised of all the progress and are all on board and to the level that it's gone, and you'll see one of your conditions is just the continued final approval from our Utilities Department as they finalize construction drawings on the utility connections. The lighting is also the dark sky, has, honors the dark sky provisions, which is becoming fairly standard in the industry, and so, that's another nice piece to the project. Our engineering firm has reviewed the drainage and is satisfied that it meets the city standards.
So, what I'm having a hard time visualizing is the retail on the bottom floor and the, how people access it, if the parking lots are gated and, and there's gonna be kind of limited access from the Mitchell Street, it sounds like?
Uh-huh. There's a, there's a gateway that'll have an arch in the center of the block, and right now, they're also looking at an access point on the corner, and then also the other corner, and beyond those three points, they want to make sure to see what might end up being a restaurant, because they would have an interest in containing the patio space for alcohol purposes or just containing that area. So, they didn't really want to arbitrarily pick places to place the openings until they knew where those spaces would be. Once they knew where those spaces would be, then they would come back to the city, and we would have discussions on how they could maximize those openings.
So, is there gonna be any parking for those in the gray area, or is that just...
No, that will strictly be for the tenants, it'll be the on-street parking, which will offer up forty-six spaces, and that will be along Mitchell. It'll be the on-street parking, which will offer up forty-six spaces, and that will be along Mitchell. One of the things that we're looking at is expanding the parking bay on Mitchell to be two feet wider to avoid some of the conflict we see on some of the other parking on Mitchell in the core downtown area, as well as in the other side spaces. And then also introducing some parking along Shelby, and then they'll have parking also in this lot as well for, for commercial use.
Just like the downtown businesses, they...
Right.
Street parking or other...
Street parking in this one additional lot in this area.
Well, that was too, see behind over there.
A block away.
Yeah.
And this is keeping with what you see happening across the country. The cities all across the nation are lowering their standard in, for downtown projects with the idea that there's hopefully going to be an increase in walkability and use of transit, and that, the other thing is when you put in additional extra parking, that parking can substantially raise the cost of those rents in the case of apartments, or if they were condos, purchase price in the case of condos. So, it is a very common scenario now where cities are not, are abandoning their suburban standards in urban areas. It was very common for people just to set one standard for suburban use and urban use across the board, and now they're saying, you know, downtown environments, urban uses are a little bit different than suburban uses.
So, when you figured the parking for the apartments, how was that configured, one or two per apartment or...
That, that was at least one space per unit. And I believe on the commercial, very common to what we have in, in use elsewhere in the downtown, the most common use is one space per three thousand feet of retail or office.
Too bad they can't do a garden on the roof. I love all that new urban gardens on roofs.
It was suggested.
Yeah.
It all comes, it all comes down to money.
Oh, yeah, that's not cheap, but that'd be so sweet.
Yeah, there were quite a few things, amenities that were proposed that through the process had to be rejected when push came to shove on the pro forma for the project.
Okay.
The only thing I'll, I'll add, which I think is important for the City Council to remember and the community, is that this is, this is a project that is the culmination of a tremendous amount of effort, not just by the city and the developer, Michigan Community Capital and, and Dean DeCrager, but it, but it's also the State of Michigan.